The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. Please rise as you are able and give your attention to Councilwoman Clear for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chaplain Marie Heim has served as a law enforcement chaplain.
I've been for 15 years, eight years with the Topeka Police Department and seven years with the Jackson County Sheriff's Department. He's served as a pastor over 30 years in churches in Missouri, Texas, and Kansas. Currently, he works for the Department of Veterans Affairs as administrative support and behavioral health. Chaplain Heim is married and has three adult children and three grandchildren, and he counts it an honor to serve Topeka's finest as a law enforcement chaplain.
On behalf of the police chaplains of the city of Topeka, I want to thank you for the privilege that we have to serve the Topeka's finest, those who are sworn to serve and protect us, and I count it a great privilege. So, thank you for inviting me to bring the invocation this evening. Would you bow your head as we pray? Dear wise and loving Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that we have received. We thank you for those that we have been in contact with this day, our family and friends and those we work with. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to use our minds and to discern your will and to work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for our community and all who serve in it, for those who teach and those who protect, for those who clean and those who repair, for those who work in parks and those who work on roads, for those who plan and for those who make those plans happen, for those who heal and those who counsel, for those who govern and those who elect those who govern. We thank you for our capital city. We also pray for all in our community who are hungry, unemployed, or uninsured, who are mentally or physically ill, and for these, we pray that you would hear our prayers. As we begin the meeting this evening, I pray for each councilman here. I pray for the agenda set before the council today. I pray that you'd given us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Topeka. Give each person here tonight clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and a sense of humor. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words and give them presence of mind and an open heart and all of God's people said.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chaplain. There are no proclamations or presentations, so we will proceed with your roll call.
Mayor Walcott.
Here.
Councilmember Siller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Jensen.
President.
Horace.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
Counsel, I'd like to take a minute to introduce some people who just joined the room, who came in. There are three individuals, and I'm going to ask them to stand along with Katie. These are delegates to the United -- in the United States as part of a political exchange program through the American Council of Young Political Leaders. They arrived in Topeka on Thursday, October 12, and will be here until Saturday, November the 11th. During their time in the city, they have been assigned fellowships with District Attorney Mike Hegi, City Councilman Karen Hiller, and the League of Kansas Municipalities. The delegates also will be attending meetings with elected officials at local, state, and federal level. They will attend events in Topeka, Northeast Kansas, and they are Dita Listia, Indonesia, all right, Jeff Palmasip, Thailand, and Tien Royal Mayamar. And they're working with Katie Gupal, the area manager of external affairs of AT&amp;T. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're glad to have you here. And we'll call the -- there are changes in the agenda. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to request that we remove item 7B from the agenda. That's the Sweetfield Development Agreement discussion. We had hoped we would be at the point to have a more robust public discussion at this time, but we are not yet there, so we would respectfully request that that item be pulled.
Okay, it has been removed. And also, there will be three executive sessions. You receive background on that. We proceed then with the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Heather Weed to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending December 31, 2019.
That is the appointment, your pleasure. Councilman Clear.
Move to approve.
Moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen seconds. All in favor, vote yes.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the appointment is approved. Heather could not be here tonight. She is -- this is the reappointment of Sustainability Board. Proceed then with the council consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear approving a special event known as the Halloween Street Fair in Noto. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Top City Customs an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-170 concerning noise prohibitions. C is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of September 2 through September 29, 2017, and enumerating said expenditures therein. D are minutes of the regular meeting of October 10, and there is one serial mock beverage license application, and staff is requesting approval.
Okay, the -- that is the consent agenda. Councilwoman De La Isla moves to approve. Councilman Jensen seconds. There's no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. To go to the action items, first is the Development Agreement Amendment.
A is approval of an amendment to the Development Agreement with Historic Jayhawk Theater Incorporated to reallocate transit guest tax funds and require approval of changes to project scope exceeding $100,000.
Mr. Endem City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Last month, in September, early September, the governing body took action that did a couple of things. The first was to approve Jayhawk Theater's request to amend their development agreement and to reallocate $155,000 from constructing a marquee to architectural construction documents, so just to allow them some flexibility so that they could fundraise for the sign. And the second was to approve a recommendation from the TGT Committee, which requires that any agreement amendments over $100,000 have to come to the body. So, what this is tonight is the amendment to that contract, which does those two very specific things. Thank you.
Okay, we're just putting into action what we already did, now we're finishing.
Putting into action what you listed it as.
Councilman Hiller.
Move to approve.
And move to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I'm sorry, did I?
I was just going to say I'll abstain as a member of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Well, mine says I voted yes, so can you clear it?
Okay, we're going to vote again.
Okay. Okay, we have eight yes, and Mr. Jensen abstention.
Eight having voted yes, the Development Agreement Amendment is approved. Item B.
B is ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning employees, the Personnel Code, departments created and established positions, amending, repealing, and remumbering several chapters in Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Topeka Municipal Code.
And this was referred to the Policy and Finance Committee, so recognize the chair, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Policy and Finance Committee have met several times over the last couple of months to consider several revisions to both this Title II and the next item will be in the same vote. So, what you have before you is the result of our work, and we believe it's ready for consideration by the council. You see the memo attached. So, I would stand for any questions.
Okay. Seeing none.
If not, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move then that we adopt the ordinance recommended for approval by the Policy and Finance Committee.
Councilman Harmon, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? You asked for discussion questions. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can somebody just say, is this cleanup language? Because all of our constituents, they don't have the memo, Mr. H. Just kind of.
Yes, I would refer that. That is correct, but Mrs. Feeney, would you like to address that question, please?
Yes, the purpose of the Title II changes is to create the Utilities Department, which is a new item, even though we've been operating with the Utilities Department, we're actually codifying it now. And then when we were making changes, we just went through Title II and made certain cleanup changes, and that's it.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Councilwoman Hiller.
Well, I was one of the people that came up with -- that had some questions at the end, and I just wanted to compliment the staff and the committee because I think they were -- they were handled. There really weren't many, but they were very thorough about it, and appreciate the work that's been done.
Okay. Appreciate your help. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Item C, second ordinance on the code.
C is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning the organization of the Utilities Department, adding new sections and amending and repealing several original sections of Title 13 Utilities of the Topeka Municipal Code.
And again, to the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the same as the last, this simply formally creates the Utilities Department and is a result of several meetings and of several revisions, so any questions?
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Same comments as before, it was very thorough. I did look at the minutes and the notes, and I don't think I saw a comment. This was sent out during the course of your consideration to nine of our big industrial users just to make sure that they didn't have any questions or concerns. Did that report come back? If I may. May I?
Sure.
Yes, but if -- would Mr. Koppely like to address that, just so I don't misspeak?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if we could have Mr. Koppely come forward, and while he's walking forward, I would also say that this helps make some changes, as requested by the EPA, to our industrial pretreatment procedures, and Braxton and team worked very closely with them to model the language that they wanted to see.
Thank you for the question. We actually, as a point of clarification, we have approximately 18 industrial users, and we did reach out to each one of those industrial users, provided them a summary of the changes in the ordinance. One of the users contacted me, I met with them individually. Another one of the users contacted our staff with technical questions, we were able to answer those, so indeed, we did reach out to them all. Thank you very much. I just think that's important, and one of the reasons I'd raise the issue is sometimes new federal regulations have come down that everybody goes, "We're not doing that," and we're arguing about it, and we're not going to change our code on that, and I wanted to make sure, and it's all fine. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, if no further questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt the ordinance recommended for approval by the Policy and Finance Committee.
Councilman Harmon, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Now, in a sense, we took very quick action on two items here that have been months in making, and I know staff starts with the attorney's office going through and making all the changes and then the committee.
200 pages or something.
How many pages?
200 or more, I think.
200 pages of this, so we do recognize this is a big effort and a major milestone when we update code. So, thank you all for your work. Item D, public hearing and ordinance.
D is a public hearing and an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber relating to the vacation of a segment of Southeast 8th Avenue located between Southeast Adams Street and Southeast Hancock Street and including a section of the BNSF railway tracks in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. Endem City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As was noted by the clerk, what you have before you is, after a brief discussion here, we'll have a public hearing, and then we're recommending that you adopt an ordinance that vacates a portion of 8th Street. As you recall, a couple of months ago, this summer, we had a presentation from Mr. Peak and BNSF regarding this process and why it was necessary, but very briefly, the railroads in this country are under mandate from the federal government to install something called PTC, Positive Train Control. Kami Young, I believe, is here, and she can get into that if we need to, but that's the impetus for this. So, BNSF came to the city to request a portion of 8th Street be vacated. That necessitated a number of meetings with the neighborhood who shared concerns of access to the businesses and the couple of residences that were there. Ultimately, we all came to a conclusion, excuse me, that as long as there was alternate access provided, the folks in the neighborhood would be comfortable with the closure, and so the city and BNSF have agreed that they will construct a street, and I believe we have a map to pop up that shows where that street will be located, but it will basically be along the west side of the grain elevator between 8th and 10th Street. And we bid that project and expect to have construction starting here very soon with an anticipated completion date of early next winter. February of '18 is the anticipated completion date. The ordinance that you have in front of you tonight is contingent upon publication, as all of our ordinances are, and it will not be published until we have a signed agreement between the railroad and the city, and that map accurately then reflects where the road will be constructed. And I would stand for questions. As noted, Kami Young from BNSF is here, and Mr. Peak has been intimately involved, so he can answer questions as well.
Council members, do you have questions before we have a public hearing? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard the interim city manager say that we're going to bid this out. Are we -- is the city paying for this?
No, I think that we -- yeah.
Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor, the railroad has agreed to absorb the costs associated with construction of the roadway.
But we built it.
They will be paying for it, but we bid it out and we handled that piece of the process for them.
So, we bid it out, but they pay for it.
That's correct.
And we figure out who's going to do the work.
Yes.
Who determines -- who approves the RFP.
The bid specs were put out as we would normally bid any road project, and folks had the opportunity, contractors had the opportunity to bid on it, and they did, and we actually opened those bids a week or 10 days ago.
Does the city approve those, or does the railroad approve those? Or do we know?
Councilwoman, it follows our bid procedure, so it's a low bid process, but certainly the railroad, I mean, they've been aware of what the process is all along.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I know that the last time they came to present, there was a couple of questions, and I don't quite remember what they were, and I just wondered if they were answered regarding a couple of questions that she was going to go back and check with the railroad. Do you remember?
I don't remember.
I don't, but I remember.
You have come forward, Jason.
Councilwoman, I don't remember the specific questions because we've had a lot and a lot of meetings working through this process, but what I would tell you, I think we've gotten to consensus with the residents on the what's needed within that road and access, so we kind of got a sign off there, and then we've also kind of reached consensus on what BNSF will participate as, or is paying for the cost of that road and getting it delivered. I'm not aware of anything outstanding that we haven't done.
If I can help on that, I'm not sure there's anything outstanding at this point, but along the way, there had been questions about whether railroad right-of-way would be encroached and whether deals needed to be worked out about that to get the road in, and then there also had been some concerns about turning radiuses and being able to pull out on 10th Street and whether other -- whether signage to get people to their businesses could be -- was needed, could be provided, and also whether even a traffic signal or some sort of traffic control was needed on East 10th Street for safety. And to make a somewhat involved story short, all of those got worked through, and they're on -- none of that's going to happen, but they are comfortable with it, and we're about to have the public hearing, but I'll go ahead and make a couple remarks. Nobody's here, and I think that's a great credit to the staff, spending the time that they did with them, because what happened, that Doug didn't quite mention, is that between then and now, the railroad's ready to close the crossing right now, and the street isn't built yet, which means that they would have ingress egress only to 6th Street until the street's finished, and that also was raised with the businesses. And not everybody was at that meeting, but they're a pretty tight-knit group and assured that the word would get around and they'd make sure everybody knew and that they thought it would be all right, and nobody's here, so it's really been vetted.
Excuse me. You had a public hearing recently, didn't you? I mean, that we have that in our -- October the 5th is in our material.
Yes, Mayor, within the -- we had the formal public hearing required through our process for vacation, and that was in addition to three separate meetings we held with constituents in that area. And just to add to Councilwoman Hiller's point, we are working with the railroad in that they may need to close that prior to completion of Washington Street, so.
Any other questions before we have a public hearing? Seeing none, thank you. We will -- the public hearing is now open for anyone who wishes to speak on this issue. It is a -- since vacating a street and that requires a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed. We have then, counsel, before us, the ordinance. What is your pleasure? Actually, this, I think, as it says, this falls between two council districts, one and two.
We'll do it.
So, one can move and one can second.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, and Hiller, seconds. Any discussion? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mr. Mayor, this, I forget her name, but she came forward, I didn't know if she wanted to add anything.
Well, I --
Okay.
Do you wish to -- this Miss Young, representing BNSF, has been a part of this process all the way through.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I -- well, I take that back. So, two questions I think you had was regarding the crossing surface at 10th Avenue, which was done, and I think another one was the UP. Those were the two. So, we did renew the surface at 10th Avenue and remove a old track. The other one was on Union Pacific, but regarding the closure, I'd just like to thank the city staff because they did, like you said, Councilman, they worked really hard with us, and we appreciate the cooperation, because it is a struggle and a challenge, and there's many hurdles that have to get passed on closures, so we do appreciate that for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item E.
D is a petition, a project budget amount of $2,013,485, and a resolution of advisability and authorization introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber, authorizing improvement project key 701027, which will provide for street and storm sewer services on Southwest 49th Street from Winger Road to BNSF railroad crossing as more specifically described herein.
Mr. Endem City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. What you have for you tonight for action is what's called a resolution of advisability and authorization, as the clerk noted, and that simply gives council consent to the project moving forward with this project and a project, and gives life to the project budget. This is a street and stormwater project that takes place on Southwest 49th in the Commerce Park subdivision, the central crossing Commerce Park subdivision. It's 49th Street between Winger Road, and then there's a BNSF railroad crossing out in that area, and I think we -- you've been briefed on this before, and I think we all understand that it's very important to the economic development efforts that will happen out in that area, and certainly has been supported by the parties out there, so we would request your authorization to move forward with this.
And you, as all JDO board members know, we voted to approve this, used JDO funds and then the properties in the area, so it is a project that the city has no cost, paid for by the Go To Pika funds or the parties that exist there. We have one person signed to speak, is Angela Sharp.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Angela Sharp with Bartlett &amp; West, and we've been working with Go To Pika on the project, and Molly Howie is here this evening also, and I just signed up to answer any questions you might have on the project. We're excited about having these road improvements at no cost to the city so that we can help to develop that property with Go To Pika in the future. So, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Angela? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know those businesses out there are very interested in getting this street improved. Your pleasure, Councilwoman De La Isla. Moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Item F, ordinance.
F is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber repealing Chapter 5.170 of the Topeka Municipal Code concerning the regulation of scrap metal dealers.
Mr. Endem City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is one of those items that we bring before you from time to time that we would call cleanup ordinance. Over the years, cities have traditionally tried to regulate scrap metal dealers, and new state law prohibits that from happening, and so this is an ordinance to help us clean up the language that we have in our code. Deputy City Attorney Mary Feeney can answer any more specific questions, but again, it's just what we would consider a cleanup ordinance.
So, we will no longer be in the business working on scrap metal.
That's correct. It's now the Attorney General's responsibility to register scrap metal dealers, and as the legislature has specifically preempted cities from any involvement in scrap metal.
Another example of people knowing what's best for us. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I had some questions about this because when the state has taken over other things that we were responsible for, they have changed them, and I wasn't sure that we'd had a briefing on what that meant. I know Councilwoman Ortiz is particularly interested in scrap metal, and so am I, and so I got -- I got given a couple links, and when I pulled up this first one, I stopped and decided I was going to ask, because it says the changes that were enacted for the Scrap Metal Reduction Act enacted by the legislature became effective June 1, and then proceeds to say that they don't have to establish their database on sale until January 1, 2019. They don't -- every requirement that they forward information required for the database is suspended until January 1, 2019. The authority to -- of the Attorney General to prescribe or collect a registration fee or renewal fee is suspended until January 2019, and the previous requirement that a person filing a scrap metal dealer registration be subject to a criminal history records check or fingerprinting is suspended until January 1, 2019. So, I really wanted to know whether they're completely unregulated right now or where we are.
I can respond to that.
Thank you.
The Attorney General has got a great deal of power, but in 2017, the initial law in 2015, giving the Attorney General the responsibility to create a database and start fining people, that was a little bit too soon for the Attorney General to establish a database, so last year, the legislature gave the Attorney General a little more time to kind of get their act together, but the Attorney General still has a great their act together, but the Attorney General still has a great deal of power to bring consent orders and file declaratory judgment actions and to take actions against scrap metal dealers right now. And the legislature specifically says cities can't have no authority to enforce the ordinances that they passed, so.
But if I may, I mean, is the state doing as much or more as we were?
Yes, they are, much more. We never had the authority to actually take scrap metal dealers to court and to get civil penalties against them, and the Attorney General does. So I think the situation is a lot better giving it to the Attorney General.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Your pleasure. Councilwoman Delisa moves to approve. Councilwoman Claire seconds. Any other discussion? All of those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. Go to the non-action items, discussion.
A is discussion of the Fire Department's strategic plan.
Mr. Intrum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As Chief Duke walks forward, as is typical, I'll give a brief overview of this item. It seems like the chief has been here for a long time, but he hasn't. He's been here just over six months, and in the last six months, he's had a very tall order. He's had a lot of pressure put on him, and he's been a very, very busy guy. One of the things that he was tasked with immediately was to begin working on a strategic plan for the department, and he is going to give an overview of that tonight. He's not going to get into details or get into the weeds on things, but he's simply going to talk about where we've been at and where we ultimately want to get there, and the vehicle that we intend to use to reach our ultimate goal. So also, before Chief Duke gets started, I don't want to steal this thunder, but I do want to introduce Deputy Chief Adams, who I know has put a significant amount of work into this process and who may not be familiar to all of this body, so.
Would you stand? That way we can, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, yes, I have been here for just over six months, and yes, there has been work to be done, but without the assistance of administrative staff and really good talks with the labor and also with the interim city manager's office, we've been able to move ahead in a lot of things, everything from how we do the promotional testing, how we do the hiring process, working well with HR on that and everything. So things have been going really well. The people within the Topeka Fire Department, my hat's off to them, because they have accepted me, and they also are working with me through any changes that I have suggested, and really good input with them. So this strategic plan that I've been putting together, you know, it's taken a while, and as Mr. Gerber says, Deputy Chief Adams, he's been really working hard with this. We've both attended some seminars on this process, and we feel it's the best process for the Topeka Fire Department as it moves ahead. So looking at our mission, obviously, you've seen this before, to save lives, protect property by providing excellence and leadership in fire protection, emergency medical response, public education, and fire prevention. The Fire Department lives by that, they still live by it, they do it every day. Who are we? This is the sort of things that fire departments are now having to task with. Before, it was, as I explained to Mr. Gerber one day, it's not putting the wet stuff on the red stuff anymore. It's a multi-response, hazard response department between the fires, hazmat, specialty units. They do this on a daily basis, they train for it, they're prepared for it. Apologize, I have to go back one. There we go. So we're a five-division department, obviously, operations, fire prevention, training, and EMS, led by administration. These departments have been working hard, they've all pushed their way forward, preparing for what the direction that we're trying to go in, and that is to accumulate data that they provide through either their run responses, their contacts with the public, public education, fire inspections, everything. This is all part of the program that we're trying to push towards. The fire station locations, that's going to be a big issue as we go through this process. I won't bring it up now, because that's planned as we move forward, how we're going to move forward with the station resource allocations. So where are we? This is what I found in my office, probably the first few days I was there. There are about five, I think, studies that were done, and I looked at them all. 1992 was the first one that I found. Probably cost about $100,000 to go through these studies. They were all requested by different players, and that plays a big part in the process that we're trying to go through when I start this. There were some positive aspects to each of these studies, but the thing is, they're still sitting in a drawer. I don't mean to disparage anybody with those remarks, but that's just the way it is. I had a retired chief stop by to see me, and I asked him about the studies, and he just basically told me, "We've been studied to death." So now is the time to take action. There needs to be a plan, a direction, a roadmap per se, and this roadmap can be developed through accreditation. So there's our roadmap. This is accreditation through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. This is an internationally known organization. They're a not-for-profit corporation. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International, they oversee how the fire departments get accredited. So far, there's 239 fire departments nationwide through 41 states that are accredited. These departments protect communities from the size of 3,000 to 2.3 million. And interestingly enough, the biggest proportion of them are communities, over a third of them are communities somewhat like Topeka, over $1,000, sorry, over 1,000 community members, and seven of those departments are within the state of counties. So we have the likes of Lawrence Leewood, Lenexa, Shawnee, that are accredited and have been accredited for a while. So even the McConnell Air Force Base down, which it does, accredited it. So what is accreditation? It's a comprehensive self-assessment, and this is what the good thing is, we are assessing ourselves, we're having the community assess us as well. We're going to walk out into the community and ask them, tell them, "This is what we currently provide you as a service. What do you think of it?" So we'll ask them about the pros and cons of our service. How can we improve it? We will go out to the community, and it ends up being a model based on community input, not the fire chief, the city manager, labor, or anybody else. It's a community process and a community plan. It examines past and current service levels, it measures the internal performance, and it compares into current research and industry practice, best practices, and it leads to a more efficient and effective emergency service organization. Like I said, the characteristics of a community accredited agency, it's community-driven, objective-based, strategically-minded, well-organized, properly equipped, and properly staffed and trained. And you get to the bottom two bullets, you know, that was one of the things I mentioned during my interview process, you know, they asked me, "What was it, what do you need to run a good fire department?" And I likened it to a three-legged stool. You need personnel, equipment, and training, and if any of them are short, that stool's not going to stand up when you sit on it. So the self-assessment, we're going to be looking at ourselves, looking in a mirror, basically, and saying, "Okay, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? How well are we doing it? And how can we make it better?" That is the same approach we're going to go to the community with. We're going to ask them, "How are we doing? You know, do you know what we're doing? Or explain to them what we're doing?" And then we're going to let them have input on how we provide a service throughout the The Community Department Strategic Plan, so I got out of that, it's just a department strategic plan, it's a community department strategic plan. We're going to apply for accreditation. We're already doing stuff right now. Like I say, Chief Adams and myself have been to a few seminars put on by the Center for Public Service Excellence, and we have learned a lot from them. We actually learn more by networking with the other departments there that have already gone through this, and it's an assessment by your peers to tell you, you're providing the best you can with what you have. And if the community wants more, then they're going to have to tell us what more do they want, and we're going to tell them how we're going to attain that service to them. We will let them know upfront, that's going to cost money. Are you willing to spend that money? That's not up to us, it's going to be up to the governing body if they want to move ahead with that type of service. Professional development, we're doing that already, we've started it. One, with the promotional testing, we're offering more courses out there, opportunities for individuals within the staff and even on the lower levels to go to college and receive certification and education that's needed to build themselves up through the ranks. The community risk assessment, that is a big thing. We're going to have each company go out in their district and come back and tell us, where do they think their problems are within the area? Is it medical calls, a lot of medical calls? Is it structure fires? That's the sort of thing they're going to come back to us and tell us what's happening in their part of the city. So we're going to take all that information, and we're going to devise from that and the community input to say, "This is the sort of plan we should be following. This is the roadmap for us to better provide service to the community." We want to develop a community-specific standard of cover by July 2018, so we're already setting timelines for us to accomplish the things that we need to do to get to the accreditation level. We're going to complete a community-driven strategic plan, again, by 2018, December. We're going to have something in place to bring back to you and say, "This is what the community, this is what we're giving to the community, this is what they're expecting from us, this is what they want from us." So like I say, this is not driven by any one individual, this is driven by the community in itself, and our plan is to become an accredited department by December 2020. And that's our vision, 2020. So to summarize this, we're addressing the future needs by creating and utilizing a community-driven strategic plan, establish what is expected by the community, complete a stakeholder survey of the department, that's both internal stakeholders and external stakeholders. We're going to develop a standard of cover risk assessment. We're going to know where our issues are with the community, and we'll be working in conjunction with the city manager's office, planning, we're going to be working with Public Works, because as things come into the city, things change. So if we have a certain area that has, they develop a assisted living facility within that, that's going to increase the possibility of running medical calls. If there is a commercial property built, that's going to risk the load on that fire apparatus within that district. So we have to look at all of that, and we want to become a Center for Public Safety Excellence accredited department, because this will allow us to obtain and maintain the type of service the community not only needs but expects from us. So with that being said, that's just a synopsis of what we're wanting to do, and with the using, the people behind are supporting this. This is the administration, and labor's been very open to move ahead with this, because they want a roadmap, they want a direction to go where they need to go, and I feel that this is the best way, because it is a community-oriented plan.
Okay. So it is a self-assessment tool, you get the tools, and actually, you put this together rather than somebody coming in from outside?
That is correct. We're not going to spend any money on this, except the time and effort by staff. And what is good about this, like I said, we are going to have peers come in, they're going to basically lead us by the hand. They've already been through this process, they know it. So we're going to have subject matters experts come in and say, "This is how we dealt with this issue in our community. It may work for yours, think about it," and we would, and we'd try to adopt it if we could. Every part of it, from the EMS calls, the hazmat calls, the structure fire calls, all the calls that Topeka has to deal with on a daily basis, there are better ways to do it. We know that, and so we're going to get the input from all those people that have already gone through this.
Okay, good. All right, questions, discussion? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing that has frustrated me about the countless studies we've done, in addition to the fact that we've done countless studies and done nothing with them, is that as far as it's been explained to me, none of those studies take a look at the way, you know, we're all working very diligently to build our community, increase our population density, and create a new Topeka, and none of those studies do any kind of forecasting as to population growth and how the changes we're trying to make today will weather an influx of people, which I firmly believe will happen if we are playing our cards right. So without doing yet another study, how can you ensure that the changes that we need to make are the right ones for a growing Topeka in the future?
Well, with the accreditation, the plan shows you, you have your benchmarks. There's the base of it, what you're doing right now, and they take into consideration the rooftops going in, industrial, industry, commercial going in, and they will tell you, when your call log gets up to a certain level within that area, you're going to have to start considering either building another station or putting more people and apparatus out there. So that's always in the plans, they always plan for the future, they'll plan if you need to reallocate your resources, that by the benchmark set and the standards that we're trying to meet for the community, as soon as that benchmark, someone's going to have to step up and say, "Yes, the plan says we need to build another station, or we need more apparatus out there, so the response towns within that community meet the standards set out by the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA."
That's excellent news, thank you.
That's good, good. Any other discussion, questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Duke, I want to thank you for taking out all of those out of that file cabinet, those studies. You know, I get so tired of this, we don't like what this study says, so we're going to get another study, and another study, and another study. And I agree with you, I think we can take away from each one of them, and I commend you on taking it to the community and educate, educating them, because we haven't done that. We haven't done that in a long time. And when we can have brand-new fire trucks, and we can say, "Do you know how much they cost?" And they don't, that's disheartening to me, because I think if they understood more about the Fire Department, I think we could get a lot further, not only for the men that serve on the Fire Department, but for everybody. I think it will benefit everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I have five, too. So if you find another one, you let me know.
Councilwoman Delisa?
I just wanted to extend my appreciation as well. Within six months, you've already gone ahead and taken a look at all of those reports, and I think that what's really important for all of us to notice the fact that, like the chief said, each of those reports were being requested by different areas and different people. And therefore, it's just like statistics, you go ahead and you look for the sample that you're looking for, and you get the result that you want. So I really appreciate the fact that we're going to do it community-wide, that we're going to talk, and that we have a date of completion, and most importantly, I think that what our listeners are thinking of is, you addressed the big question, and the big elephant in the room, is the reallocation of those stations. How is that going to happen? And I'm excited to hear that by 2020, and hopefully before, we'll have a plan, but by 2020, we'll be accredited, and we'll have answers coming to us, because you're working through that process. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I think you've had nice expressions of support, and looking forward to the next step. Could you introduce the other people from your staff that are here, and also the leaders of the organized labor group?
Yes, the labor reps would stand up. Aaron Freeman, who is currently the president.
Thank you.
The president of that, and Jason Broadbent.
Thank you.
Two very astute young men.
Thank you. Thank you, fellas.
Who are, it's all about the community to them.
Good, great, glad to hear that.
And then also, we have Battalion Chief Ty Christian and our Fire Marshal, Michael Martin. And obviously, you met Kelly Adams, the deputy chief.
Right, thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for the presentation. That completes our non-action items. We then go to announcements, and we have no meeting next week, so there is no preliminary agenda, so, Mr. Intrum City Manager, have your announcements.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just three really quick announcements. First, I would echo your comments about the establishment of the Utilities Department, the items B and C. That took about three minutes. That took about three minutes of actual time, but it took months and months of hard work from staff, from particularly Bob Sample and Braxton Copley and the team that's being built over there. I'm just so appreciative that we're going down this path. It's a vision we've had for a while, and I, it's a credit to them to finally get us The next two Saturdays, we'll see Boo at the Zoo. I think most folks are aware of that, but just in case you're not, Boo at the Zoo the next two Saturdays, and that'll be from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Zoo on the 21st and the 28th. And then finally, a shout-out, a congratulations to two of our employees. This is at least the second year in a row that we've had some folks graduate from the Latino Leadership Collaborative of Kansas program, and that graduation happened just last Saturday. The first was representing the Police Department, and that was Ishmael Bermudez. And then we also had Liz Rodriguez, who many of you may have known from HR, but who is now actually in our Utilities Department. So congratulations to them. Thank you.
Well, I went to acknowledge that this council meeting is the last meeting, that our Intram City Manager will be in the role that he is. Will be having a change by the time of our next council meeting, and I want to convey our thanks and appreciation for the fine leadership that you have given. You've done an excellent job, and we appreciate it greatly. Thank you. And we go, Councilwoman Claire.
Ditto.
Thank you. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is the last meeting that I will be able to hound you about our smoke detectors. I'm still working on that, so be, I'm expecting a call from Marshal Mike, Mike Martin, Fire Marshal Mike Martin. I discussed with him that I have some numbers and stuff to put forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gerber, I'd just echo the mayor's comments, and I hope you're still working here for a, for a long, long time, so we'll appreciate everything you've done.
Councilwoman De La Isla.
Echoing the appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Gerber, for your service.
Councilman Jensen.
I, too, will share those comments. I think you've done a phenomenal job, and we appreciate your service to this community. I want to wish all of you a happy Halloween. That will come and go before we meet again. I will be eating quite a lot of candy between now and then, so enjoy it as well.
Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. If you guys didn't know, I'm on the Shawnee County Local Emergency Planning Committee as the council representative, and we got an honor for the outstanding achievement in planning for chemical emergencies. So people representing the city is me and Jim Green on the Emergency Management Department. So, great for Topeka.
Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Doug, I, too, want to thank you for your, for your service stepping into a, to a role as interim is more challenging than any of us have any idea. And you've guided us through, through the budget process without asking for a mill levy increase, which is a remarkable achievement. And you've, the ship of state has continued to sail in a solid direction under your leadership, and I want to thank you for, for your willingness, number one, to step up and do it and agree to do it, and for doing such a wonderful job at it. So very much appreciated, Doug. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman. Councilman Hiller.
I will echo my colleagues. Doug, it's been, it's been a really solid, whatever it's been, six months? Longer than that? Year?
One, almost exactly. One year.
Yeah. And you've done a great job. We've all grown a lot, I think, and sincerely thank you. And other than that, we don't meet again until November the 14th because there's an election on the first Tuesday of November, so good luck to everyone that's involved in that.
Including?
Including myself. Of course. Thank you.
Very good. That's the announcements. We have no public comment this evening, so we have the executive session. If the Deputy City Attorney would provide the parameters for the first.
The motion is to recess into executive session for 15 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding potential litigation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the request of the following staff, in addition to legal counsel, interim city manager Doug Gerber, HR director Jackie Russell, and financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the council chambers, and that is the motion.
Okay, is Councilwoman De La Isla moves. Our Councilwoman Claire seconds to go into executive session along those parameters. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, we go into executive session when the room is clear. Council, let's take a short break, and then we'll be ready to go.
The motion is to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the status of employer/employee negotiations as justified by KSA 45-4319B3. In order to aid the discussion, the following staff are requested to be present, interim city manager Doug Gerber, HR director Jackie Russell, financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee, and Deputy City Attorney Mary Feeney. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the council chambers.
Okay, is there a motion? Councilman Emerson moves to go into executive session. Councilwoman Claire seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. The second executive session has ended with no action taken. There is a need for a third executive session. If the associate city attorney would provide the parameters.
Motion would be to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the financial affairs or the trade secrets of the Wheatfield project developer as justified by KSA 75-4319B4. In order to aid the discussion, I request the following persons be present, interim city manager Doug Gerber, financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee, deputy city attorney Mary Feeney, the city's financial advisor Jeff White from Columbia Capital, Bob Johnson, and Jennifer Sork, attorneys for the Wheatfield project developer. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the council chambers.
Okay, those are the parameters. Is there a motion? Councilwoman De La Isla moves to approve, and Councilman Jensen seconds. We go into executive session along those parameters. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. We go into executive session.
Before the Wheatfield developers come in, all the
Wait just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.